That's Mrs. Sullivan. He's on audio. We got him? Okay.
Okay, I'm here.
Very low, very low, Dave. If you could fix your mic, that'd be great. We'll begin tonight with public participation. I would like to remind everyone, no defamatory comments. If the item is on the agenda, please wait your turn on that. We'll get to that as soon as we go through, go through. We got Mr., okay, there's Mr. Sullivan. Okay. So we'll go ahead and open with public comments. So anyone having any public comments, please come forward.
Candy Stevens, District Three.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I have some unfinished business. They approved the rest of Summer Tide over by my house, Royal Palms, Old Kings. Everybody know what I'm talking about? Four things. Number one, why is the speed limit 25, then 35, then 45 between Town Center and Belter? That's, it should be either 25 or 35 all the way through because that's a residential area, and I'll get to why. We have Lehigh Trail just on the other side of Royal Palms. I used to like to walk my dog over there, but I can barely get across the street now because of traffic and how fast people are speeding. And I know it's just going to get worse when the other houses are put in. So I know you guys were talking about some kind of traffic calming devices over there. So I'd like you to also consider, because I see these every day when I drive to St. Augustine, and I also go through the hammock, and they have them, so I don't know why we can't have them in Palm Coast, the flashing pedestrian lights. I would like to see one where they already have the Crosswalk Act painted at Summer Tide. I would like to see another one at Royal Palms and Point Pleasant. And I would like to see another one between where Royal Palms dead ends onto Towns, I guess that's Town, whatever that street is, Town Center, up between where the school is. Because the kids need to be crossing, you need to be thinking about people on bikes, people on skateboards, people walking, jogging. A lot of us use that area over there. I haven't been able to for a long time because of all the traffic. So I would like you to consider putting three of those in. That might actually calm the traffic as well and help with that. Also, the curbs in that area, I think that the developers should pay for different curbs on Royal Palms, because when traffic is stopped and backed up both ways, which it gets that way all the time, there's nowhere for us to pull over for the fire truck or the police cars to get through. We have the sharp curbs. You guys need to change the curbing so we can pull out of the way. They go, they use that road a lot for emergencies. So I think that you need to look at having the developer or somebody pay for that for safety. Let me see. I also had a meeting with Carl. I'm talking, I'm sorry, I was just talking about Summer Tide, and I was talking, it's the other name. The Summer Tide is the one at Ponce de Leon and Point Pleasant. I had a meeting with Carl and Carmelo, and I never got a follow-up on the ditch that runs parallel to Pony Express at the north side of that new development, because it's, they agreed with me it needed to be cleaned out. And we're getting into rainy season, and the water needs to go somewhere. So we need to get that looked at. I would like to know when that's on the schedule now as well. And that was all I had, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
You said Pony Express?
Yeah, it runs parallel to Pony Express, and it's on the north backside of the Summer Tide development. It's behind it. You'll see it. Carl lives in the development over there, like me, but I live on the other side. So I thought they would get on it a little quicker. I'm just thinking about hurricane season coming, and that water's got to go somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. For ten years, I've lived in this city. Seen a lot of changes. I've seen three city clerks. I've seen four city attorneys. I've seen four city managers. I've seen three mayors, couple lawyers. It's got to stop. It's got to stop. We got to make, you guys are going to make the right decision, hopefully, tonight. But you got to make the right one. You got to put your own personal agendas on the side. You got to think about all of us. The only thing that makes me feel good is when things don't go right, they don't go right just for me, they go right for all of you two. So please, do the right thing. Make the right call so that we don't keep rotating all the people that are sitting up here that supposedly care about this city. And to the council people and the city clerk, the city manager who participated on Saturday at the Tunnels and Towers run, thank you. And all I can say is that if I was sitting up here and I had one vote, there'd only be one person in this entire city, and unfortunately, that person can't do the job. But there's only one person in this entire city that deserves to be the next city manager.
Sir, we're not talking, you can't talk about the city manager. It's on the agenda. It's an agenda item.
Okay, there's only one person that's doing the right job every day for all of us, right there. Lauren Johnson, she's doing the right job for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Stone.
Chris Stone, Palm Coast.
Yes, sir.
The water bill. This city has been in problem with the water department since we lived in Ormond Beach, Palm Coast, which is about 12 years. When we first moved to Florida, we lived on the Halifax River on Riverside Drive. Back then, our water bills was, all our utilities, was $88 a month. That was it. You know what it is today in Ormond Beach? $88. Now, I understand we have a much larger population, but why has it gone so crazy? And if we don't have the right people in place to correct the problem, like any major corporation, you take them in, you put them on probation, you talk to them, you find out what the problem is. The second situation, what's going on with this city is disgusting. This man was overwhelmingly selected by the people, the largest land site in Palm Coast ever, ever. Oh, we had some corrupted mayors, yes. You can check your head, but it was only an overwhelming decision. So you guys got to figure out how to work together, and for anything civil and for the residents of these cities. Some of the remarks were terrible, terrible. And we had, and it's, I did not hear from Mike, I heard from one of the newspapers. I was personally like to know, some people were fired for falsicating their time, which could be a large criminal offense. What kind of money are we talking about? What's being done? And we know one person was terminated, another person put on probation. Why would you even think of letting him come back? You do it once, you do it twice. The last thing I have, going forward with this city, just like any other city or county, when there's an empty spot, the previous mayor should not be allowed to sign something. There should have been a roundoff for his seat. That's just the way America works. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, Ms. Carroll.
Carol Ann Stoughton, Butter Drive, Palm Coast, Florida. I first want to thank the mayor for trying to do his job. Evidently, it's four to one against him at every effort he makes to try to improve this town. First of all, the developments in this town are a disaster. Today, I rode down Sesame Street. It looks like a bombing area, development, or fields torn down, Point Pleasant Drive. When are we going to say no to the developers? I used to live in Edgewater, and we fought the developers and won, and there still is a moratorium there today. I also want to say that there's too much going against the mayor and Mr. Gammarino, who I don't think should be sitting up there. He is not an elected official. Oh, by the way, I did not vote for the mayor, but I am thankful that he is our mayor and trying to do good for our city. I feel that the higher-ups in the back rooms, making $200,000, making $156,000, city manager acting with an acting helper for her, and then you have the chief development officer. Do we need a development officer? Can't the city manager take over that job? And let's try to incorporate some of these jobs under one roof. And it's a sin that the observer who supposedly stands for building community and creating spirit has to throw this on the front page, a four to zero vote. Mr. Mayor gets accused of everything. Even when my kids were in school, they loved green nail polish on Sesame Street, also called trash can green, and he was insulted for that. I feel we could do much better, and I think the salary should be put in our water bills so that the people know what we're paying for. And I really feel the audit should be done in this town, and even if it's not an audit by an independent contractor, let the prosecutor's office come in and see what's going on. Where was the money going? Thank you for your listen to my comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, Mr. McDonald. Yes, sir.
Well, the young lady before me just spoke about being four to one. And I want to bring something up here that none of you probably are aware of, or if, because, of course, the news media doesn't put it out. Our governor is hundreds to one right now in, up in Tallahassee. Have you been reading what Dr. Rudman has been putting in the newspapers? Guess not. Must have missed that. Okay, but you're going to get the governor to come down here, sir, okay, and remove him, okay? When the governor's got a bigger problem than we ever had up in Tallahassee. He's got everybody against him pretty much, okay? Some of the things that it came out of, some of the meetings that were with the young, just-elected, you know, representatives to our legislature were amazing, okay? So what I like to do here is, is I like to point out a couple things, okay, that are facts, right? Let's go back to the second meeting in March, sir, okay? Now, one of the things I see in the minutes, okay, is that when you attacked the mayor, okay, and pulled this whole, what I call a hit job, okay, you weren't even here. But yet, you're saying the mayor the other day was absent from something, and you got a problem with it? Seriously. You pulled a hit job on this gentleman here, our mayor, okay, off the telephone. Did we see that in the newspaper? Nope. Is it in the minutes? No, it's not. So what I would suggest to everybody is go back and look at the optics, okay? At three hours and 41 minutes when it all started, okay? You will see Councilman Gambaro start it all, okay? And what's really interesting to me, and I, and I was actually in the room when it happened, was how seamless, okay, the transition was from your talking points to Mr. Miller. It was almost like your time was up and you handed him the other half of the paper, okay? It was amazing. If this isn't a sunshine violation, I don't know what is, okay? This needs to be looked at hard, really hard. The facts are in everybody's face. And what was also amazing to me was when I went back and I looked at some of the old films, we'd never seen Mr. Gambaro at any meeting. I go to the city meetings all the time. You guys know that, okay? But yet, third row in the back, in the middle, Mr. Gambaro's sitting there on the 27th of August, when we first had the discussion about Kathy Hyder's seat. Right out of the blue, just like that, he appears. I'm amazed, okay? The optics gentlemen are really bad, Mr. Miller, okay? Where you transitioned almost immediately. Go watch it for yourself, okay? It is absolutely horrendous, and the public needs to pay attention to that to see what the game is that's being played on us here. So, but there's more coming. There's a lot more coming. And so, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, C.D. How are you, sir?
Good. C.D. Rosell. I'm not going to be talking about that. I'm going to be talking about your traffic calming.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
I know you're a low talker.
I'm going to talk about the traffic calming. I'm an expert on it, okay? I was a police officer in L.A. in a city that went to those, and I destroyed a police car one night in a pursuit. Anyway, I'd be more than happy to deal with your traffic department, because I've met those guys when I did the Citizens Academy. And they've got a pretty good idea, but they need to look at the inverted. And I put that in Neighbors, I think it was, of the inverted systems, which are, it's fire department friendly. That was our big deal when we put them in in Culver City. And the also, it does a, it has a method of detecting the speeding cars, so they see it. But the people that are moving along at the, you know, regulated speed, they don't even see it or feel it. So you don't hear that complaint about I'm going over it and it's destroying my suspension. So for the price of a fresh doughnut, you can get my experience on that if you so desire. Okay. I just wanted to put a face on my name, because you see me on Neighbors all the time. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, C.D. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Can't go without saying something, since I'm not going to be here a couple weeks.
State your name for the record, please.
Denise Henry, P. Section. I just want to say that I think the most appalling thing that I saw was that city employees were writing complaints about the mayor even before he officially took office. And I just want to suggest to the rest of you to check and see if any complaints are written about you. Just waiting for the moment that they need to use them. And that's I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Davis.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Davis, and I'm here to demand accountability and transparency. Since August 2023, I've raised serious concerns about flooding on my property. Flooding that began after a new infill home was built next to mine and elevated 30 inches higher, confirmed by a city-funded survey. Before that build, I never had these issues. Now I deal with standing water, flooded swells, property impacts I never faced before. Let's be clear, you can't approve infill development that overwhelms a drainage system, then dismiss the consequences. In April 2025, the city is finally upgrading the upstream culvert to 42-inch pipes. Exactly what I've been saying was needed from the beginning. Now, I know the city will say, we're upgrading the pipes, and yes, you are, but that doesn't erase what happened. That upgrade is a reaction, a correction, that only came after nearly two years of pressure. And let me be very clear, that city may think I should be grateful. I am not. An upgrade now doesn't erase two years of stress, damage, and being ignored. Doing the right thing late does not undo doing the wrong thing first. This is not regular maintenance. This is an omission of poor planning and negligence. And to add insult to injury, the city's idea of helping was launching a dirt donation program, as if truckloads of dirt could fix systemic drainage failures. Offering dirt is not accountability. It's an insult to what residents have endured. And here's the question, how was this ever approved? How does a 30-inch elevation next to existing homes gets greenlit without serious drainage planning? Who reviewed it? Who signed off? Where was accountability? I'm calling for formal acknowledgement that this was an act of misfeasance, a full review of the infill and permitting process, and a real commitment to protect existing homeowners. The culvert upgrade might help, but the damage is already done. Let me be clear, I expect the city to correct this reasonably. I will continue to advocate for myself and my neighbors using every avenue available to protect our homes and our rights if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else for public comment? You can't speak again, Ms. Stevens. Well, different, I'm sorry. Is everyone okay with a different subject, or it's just one, one round up front, right? Just one round? Yes, sir. You'll get another one, Ms. Stevens.
Hello, Jeff Notts, P. Section.
Yes, sir.
I just want to just say one thing. Only two people up there has been voted for the people. The rest of you, no. So I'd be watching what you're saying and what you're doing. We got a mayor and a vice mayor that's doing the right thing, and two of you are holding their back. We could get rid of both of you. We didn't vote for you. We didn't put you there. Somebody else did. And guess what? They're not up there anymore. So watch yourself.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Kounas.
Gary Kounas, C. Section.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Pontario, you aware of the damage that those speed bumps are doing to the tires? Do you have any idea? They're fracturing the belts inside after you've been on 95 making runs, and running the wife up to Jacksonville every day for the last three weeks, and coming back. And two weeks ago, Thursday, came home, no problem. Friday morning, there was a vibration in the car. I had still take her up there. Went to Discount Tire on Saturday, they took tires off the car, and two of the tires had fractured belts in them from going over those bumps. It doesn't matter speed. I can't go over fast because of my hip operation, because it jolts it. So it's a slow speed, and it's on two sides. So it's going over those bumps and causing problems. I paid for it the first time. If I had to pay for it the second time, I'm coming after you for the costs. Understand? Okay. This letter here, we got, which we haven't gotten for a long time, since Alvin got in, in the utility bill, water bill. If the people have been doing their jobs, we wouldn't have these problems with no water and no sewage. We have 1,500 sewer caps that leak water in every time it rains, fills the sewage system up. Then we get, oh, you can't take a shower. You can't use the wash machine. Can't use the dishwasher. If these things had been done years ago, we wouldn't have these problems today. But no, we use the money for other stuff. Pickleball, splash pond. What do we waste on a splash pond? Over 14 million after overruns? That's ridiculous, okay? Don't put grass in the canals. You go to Kangaroo Court and Code, they don't even force the grass into canals at all, and I personally saw that. You got building inspectors here that can't read plans. And I had three of them come out to my house to do a project. I had to read them the damn plans. You got electrical department, does it have any idea what Ohm's Law is? Oh, you got to put a 60-amp breaker in there because it's got a 60-amp switch, safety switch on it. No, you don't. It only draws 33 amps. You could put 60-amp breaker on a 40-amp wire? No. I recently had somebody stop me at Publix and say, weren't you the fellow about a year or so ago brought that up at a town meeting? I said, yeah. He says, they did the same thing to me. I said, what'd you do? He said, I put the 60 in. After they left, I put the 40 back in. He said, all winter long, I had no problem with this heat, this backup heater coming on, never blew the breaker, and the wire never got on fire. You can't put a 60-amp breaker on a 40-amp wire in a house. It'll heat up like a cherry red, okay? Now, anybody calculate this water bill that recently came? Do you know what the profit level on this thing is? $83 million a year. What do you do with that money? And that doesn't account the water used or sewage used. Okay, 20, over 23 million just in a swale per year. The rest, 60 million, comes off the other stuff. Something's wrong. We need a forensic audit on this stuff, because it's ridiculous. We get lied to constantly. You call, you get the same baloney. Oh, no, you don't pay taxes on your swale or your seawalls. To hell we don't. And right away, you want to push through taxes to dredge the canals. Canals are owned by you. It's up to you to clean them up. You had the money. You had 70 million in the swales from Poles time, but nobody knows where that is.
Thank you, Mr. Kounas. Anyone else, anyone else for public comment? Yes, Ms. Donna.
Thank you for the kind address, Mr. Mayor. I want to address that I don't know who legally should be up on the dais. I know who was voted in, and I don't know who was not legally voted in. But that is not for me to say or the residents. We have lawyers, and we have officials that can address that. But in the meantime, we have a city, we have a reputation that is suffering. And whether or not people want to retire here or whether or not relocate here, we are suffering. In the middle of all this, we are suffering on a budgetary standpoint, and we are suffering as residents, because we are wasting a lot of valuable time on this. And we need to get back to basics. We need to get back to focus with regards to our water filtration system and other matters that are far more important. So while matters are being handled in Tallahassee, whether or not they go to the governor or not, that is all out of our hands. But we are losing staff members, we are losing morale, we are losing the spirit of why we all live here in Palm Coast. So I don't know what's going to happen, but I'm very concerned that tonight's focus is supposed to be about picking a new city manager, so Ms. Johnson can go back to the great role she was doing as the assistant city manager, and we can get back to business. And I don't want any ruling that happens tonight on the dais to be overturned, because then somebody's going to say whether or not Mr. Miller is in his position, or Mr. Gambaro is in his position legally or illegally. I want to know that that vote is going to stand tonight, after we invested in flying in two candidates from Wisconsin and Colorado, whether or not those are legal votes or not. So I think we all need to address why we are here and what job we have to do. And this is money that's being counted every single time we waste time on saying whether or not is somebody legally in a position or not is in a position. But I'm very concerned about the future of Palm Coast, because we're not addressing the matters at hand and what we are all here for. This is expensive dollars to live here in Palm Coast, and exponentially, it's becoming more and more expensive to live here with a 30% tax rate in just our water bill alone. So we need to be positive, and we need to be focusing on the right things and not whether or not somebody is in the position legally or not. But I don't want that city manager vote to be overturned for any other reason. So I implore all of you to stay focused on why you are sitting up there, and the residents need to all be more focused on what's most important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? We have time for maybe one or two more. Anyone else? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the diocese. City manager, as far as Royal Palm and pedestrian lights, do, do we have, are we working that in the budget? I know we have an issue down in Seminole Woods, also at that one intersection. Are we, are we preparing a budget for that in the next cycle for those, for those flashing lights?
Yes, Mayor, it was discussed in the 10-year CIP evaluation and the strategic action plan. So both of those will come forward in, for future budget consideration.
Okay, and could you reach out to Mr. C.D. about, you know, the, what are you saying, the reverse, inverted?
Yes, and the traffic calming plan is scheduled to come to city council on May 13. It's a workshop, and it begins at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anything else from you?
Yes, sir. Ms. Stevens had commented about the ditch, and according to Ms. Lynn Stevens, that was cleaned out April 14, but I will double-check with Carmelo in the morning. I did add it to my list. And I think that was all the action items I took, Mayor.
Any, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the dais? Any other comments? If you would, city clerk, could you please make sure that the remaining member of the councils received that documentation concerning the investigation in the building department, if they don't already have it? Strip my name out of it, you know, scrub it, and send them the exact same documents you sent me yesterday, if you could. Or was that today? Was that, that was yesterday, right? Oh, okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, Doug, do we have Doug on the line? Are we ready to go with the presentation for the city managers? Oh, I'm sorry. I asked if anyone had any. I asked if anyone had any.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to address the portion that mentioned that there's only two people that are legally in spots. I just ran for election and received the most votes in Palm Coast history, so I'm not really sure we've, where we got this premise that I'm not here because the people didn't vote for me. More people voted for me than anybody has ever voted for someone in Palm Coast history. So just want to clarify that, that I'm not here because somebody appointed me, and that appointment process is also a legal process. So, you know, you might not represent with those people that are representing you, and that's your right, but I certainly was elected and elected wholeheartedly by the people of Palm Coast, so just wanted to clarify that.
Commissioner, I mean, can't get over that. Councilman Sullivan, do you have anything? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Do you have, you have any comments for, as far as public comments are concerned?
Uh, no, no additional comments. I might just add for everyone that on this Zoom call, everyone has to speak into the microphone, especially the people speaking from the podium. As soon as they move their head to the side, that gets garbled.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Any follow-ups? Uh, let's see if anything else on here. Okay, we, Ms. Fuller, do we have Doug Thomas on the line? Are we good to go with that?
Yes, we do.
All right, we're moving, we're moving into, Ed, discussion city manager search, item one, discussion city manager search.
Doug, can you hear us?
Can you, can you hear me up there?
We got you, Doug.
Excellent, thank you so much, appreciate that. I agree with Councilmember Sullivan. The audio feed is really challenging, so I appreciate everyone, even those at the dais, if they could speak into their mic, it's really difficult to hear sometimes. So tonight's purpose of the meeting, as we wrapped up the onsite interview process last week, was for the mayor and the council to have an opportunity to kind of digest all the material, review the information that had been provided in terms of, by the candidates in preparation for the onsite interviews. You all have an opportunity to meet with the two candidates that participated in the process on Thursday on one-on-one session, also a public interview process. I have provided you extra copies over the weekend. I understood there was a desire to review the first-year, the challenges and opportunity game plans that both the candidates had presented during their public interview processes on Thursday afternoon. And then we also had an opportunity for the candidates to meet with your staff, and then a chance to do a, meet with the community at large at a public meet and greet on Thursday evening. So with that in the background, you've received all the information we now have on these candidates in terms of their cover letters, their resumes, their questionnaire responses, their first-year game plans, their PowerPoints, the media searches that we've completed, as well as the reference checks that have been undertaken on both the candidates. And so typically, what we do is turn it back over to the board. I'm available to help you facilitate a conversation about what your thoughts are about the two candidates, and if there is a direction or a consensus to move forward with regards to one of those candidates. I'm more glad to kind of outline kind of what the next steps are, but I think at this point, it's probably appropriate to turn it back over to the board for any thoughts or discussions that you would like to discuss with regards to the two candidates that participated in the process last Thursday.
Okay, thank you, Doug. With that, I'll say this, I think both of those gentlemen that interviewed, either one of those gentlemen would be great for this city. I think they're both highly qualified for this position, and I think we'd be lucky to get either one of them. With that being said, any other, any further discussion from the dais? Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Yes, thank you. I agree with you. Be nice to hire both of them, but we've got to make a decision on one. And I just, again, want to thank both the candidates and their spouses for making the trip. It was great to meet both of them in person and walk through and just, just to get to know them before we make this decision. It's no surprise for me, but, you know, when, when I see a candidate that has military experience, I tend to gravitate towards them, and for a lot of different reasons. But I got to tell you, in this case, I'm not. And let me tell you why. I think that in reviewing Mr., in meeting Mr. Trambino and getting to know him a little bit on a personal level, going through his resume and experience, and when I think about how that matches with the city of Palm Coast, so a couple of things. One, you know, what are our biggest responsibilities and challenges? Well, number one, public safety, but certainly infrastructure, transportation, you know, keeping us all safe and moving in that direction. And so what jumped out at me was his experience during, you know, running a department and being the director, Homeland Security Advisor for the governor of Iowa during COVID, emergency management experience. He's a professional engineer. So when we look at water, wastewater, you know, infrastructure, transportation projects, he's a professional engineer in this, so he's certified both in the state of Wisconsin and Colorado. He's a member of the Association of Civil Engineers and the Public Work Association, and he's got the city manager certification. He was also the statewide Department of Transportation Director. I mean, he was a CEO, and confirmed twice by the Iowa Senate after being nominated by the governor. These are big deals. Oh, by the way, he was nominated by President Trump to serve as Florida Highway Administration Director, which is the same position that Derek Barr's.
I'm sorry, Councilman, that's not correct. Mr. Derek Barr was nominated for FMCA. That's the people I used to work for. That's not what Mr. Trump.
Oh, so separate? Okay, I thought it was the same one.
No, and that's, that's not a state position, that's a federal position.
Correct.
But he withdrew his nomination for that, but it's two different things. Derek Barr's was nominated for FMC SA, which is Federal Motor Carrier Safety. That's two different, two different organizations.
I thought.
I'll correct you on that from the last meeting.
But he was nominated by President Trump.
That's, that's fine, I get it. I just wanted to make sure we correct the record on that.
Okay. But in any case, this guy's, he has, has been a CEO, all right? And I think with our future plans and the challenges and the requirements we have going forward, we don't need a CEO that's going to be, you know, executing his duties as on-the-job training. We need somebody that's been a CEO, and that's, I think that's what we need. So I appreciate everything that, that, that Richard brings to the table, but, you know, as we look at the requirements and what we need for our city going forward, I think Paul Trambino is the best choice.
All right, thank you. Councilman Miller, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to reiterate the same sentiments that, you know, I appreciate everything in terms of the applicants going through this process. It's not an easy process. We started with forty-plus, maybe fifty-plus with the additional applicants, and, you know, we're here at this point, we've lost some along the way as well. And so just want to thank everybody in terms of that, the applicants and our finalists for coming out, meeting with us, presenting in public, as well as having kind of a public meet and greet after the fact. That was great, and I appreciate that, and their families coming as well. I did want to just kind of voice my concerns in terms of, you know, what are, what we were looking for when we first started this process. And, you know, the ask was for a rock star, the ask was for somebody that had managed a city, hopefully of this size or a comparable size before. And so with our current choices, and again, we lost several finalists, with our current choices, we don't have that. And so that's my first concern. And then my second concern is, you know, just the atmosphere of instability that we're asking someone to come into. I worry that, you know, they will be set up, not set up for success in terms of that as well. So to the point, I think I would be, I do have a preference between the two if council wants to move forward with an appointment. But I, I question whether we've, we've kind of hit that mark of a rock star and one that we have full confidence will come fix the problems within our city. And so I would still be persuadable by council. So I kind of look forward to seeing or hearing what everybody has to say to help guide my decision here.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Sullivan, do you have anything?
Yes. Here are my feelings on it. First of all, I'm coming in late to the process, so I didn't get the advantage of going through all the other candidates. So my experience is just with these two candidates. And I kind of agree that both are qualified and could do a good job. I wish that we had someone who had both the qualities of both Richard and Paul together, and I think we would have the perfect candidate. But a couple of things, I think we're at the point, unless someone else on the council wants to contradict this, that we're where we have to be, we need to make a decision. And the other side of it I have is, if we make a decision tonight, is there, would we come up with a specific date that the person would take over? Because I think we do need some time. First of all, the person's coming from a long way off. I would think there'd have to be arrangements made as far as any expenses that we would need to pay for the move or things like that.
That will be part of that.
And so on and so forth.
Councilman?
So given the situation we're in right now on the council, I'm willing to make a decision tonight on one of the two gentlemen for city manager, but I also think we may need to make a decision on the date that it would take effect in order to give a little time here to get things adjusted, both for their sake, coming a long way from a long way away, and the fact we have some, some issues that need to be taken care of. I would love it if Lauren would be interested, but she, she clearly is not. She said she does not, she is not an applicant, she doesn't live in the county. She's already been in, in office temporarily for over a year now. I think the charter talks about six months, or, and there has to be active participation to get the, the city manager selected by the council. So that's open, that's a subjective term, but it seems to me that the charter and our direction is to get this thing done. So if the other council members are willing to select somebody this evening, I would also be willing to do that. I think both candidates are qualified. I would tend to be towards one of them more than the other. And that's kind of where I am. I think, I think it was the interviews I did were both outstanding, and I kind of, and then with the actual, when they presented their, presented to the, to the town and the, and the council in full session in the afternoon, I had a different view on it. So in any event, that's kind of where I am. I'm not going to make a decision right now unless you want me to, but I kind of would like to hear the full council's feelings on this. I think the big decision to me is, do we select somebody tonight? And second, when would that person's term start? Because I think that is also of importance. Thank you.
Okay, can you still hear me, Councilman? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, when you were talking about the move, that would be worked out in the contract negotiation.
Right.
As far as, as moving them here. Okay, I got your input, Councilman, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, you know, I think we have two candidates that have a high level of integrity. They both seem to have a good work ethic based on their experience, their resumes. I really enjoyed. Can you hear me okay?
Vice Mayor, for some reason, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I heard everybody else. If, just give me a quick test to make sure I'm hearing you.
Test, test, test?
That's good.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll stay very close. So I was just saying, I think that both candidates have a very high level of integrity and work ethic. I can appreciate that. I think they're both very competent individuals. My concern for both of them is the lack of budget experience. If we look at their resumes, neither one of them really have much experience dealing with a very large budget.
Yeah, I'm losing, I'm losing, Vice Mayor. Doug, Douglas Thomas, are you hearing her?
No, it's, it's really broken up. I don't know if the mic can be moved.
Yeah, the other, the other mic seemed to work fine. Maybe try a different mic.
I'll sit on this, I'll sit on his seat. Give me one second, okay? Little musical chairs.
I'm sorry.
You guys make, you guys make sure you buy Councilman Miller a beer for getting the most votes in the history of the city when you see him out and about. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Okay, is that better?
I'm not sure. Try, try again, Vice Mayor.
Is that better? Is it just my voice?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. The other, you're not touching the mic or anything, are you?
I am not. Is that any better?
Well, just keep going. I'll do the best we, I'll do the best I can. I can kind of hear every second word.
Okay. My concern with both of these gentlemen is the lack of budget experience. Mr. Huff, in his resume, it states that he's had oversight of a sixteen million dollar operating budget and ten to thirty million dollars in annual capital projects. Mr. Trambino doesn't have any mention whatsoever of budget. It talks about how he has secured a lot of money in grant funds, which I can appreciate, and he's overseen one thing, twenty-five million dollars construction of Workforce Innovation Center that he oversaw or approved. But there's neither, and I, and I asked these questions too during their public interviews about their budget experience, and one of them even said, well, I didn't have the budget experience part of that, I only kind of oversaw the operations. And, and so particularly the state that we're at in our city right now, where I do feel we're at an inflection point economically. If we don't make some very strong and smart economic decisions, we could be setting ourselves up for a rough time ahead, and I don't want that. And so as I look at our budget, which has a total for the adopted fiscal year 2025 of four hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred fifty, I'm sorry, four hundred and twenty-one million, five hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, I have a very big concern that we would be bringing in a city manager that has never dealt with anything close to a budget of this magnitude. When we're bringing somebody in from across the country who has to learn our sunshine laws and adapt to other laws in the state of Florida, including learning how the different budgets and departments and things like that operate statutorily in the state of Florida, that's already a pretty steep learning curve that you, you really can't mess up. It's really, really important that we understand a lot of these things coming in. So they're learning that, but then on top of that, to have to learn how to operate a budget of this magnitude is a concern for me. And, you know, one of the questions that I asked Mr. Huff was, you know, very blatantly, how are you going to manage a budget of this size? And rightfully so, he asked me, well, how much of that is personnel? And I think he assumed that a large part of it was personnel, and it's not. Only, less than seventeen percent of our entire budget is personnel services. Capital outlay is forty-six point one nine percent. That is, capital projects is forty-six percent of our budget. If you do not know how to operate a very large budget and the projects that come with it, I don't feel you are qualified. So I have very large concerns from that standpoint. I think that both of these gentlemen would be great in other positions, and I have thought about, gosh, I really wish that we had other positions that, that we had the ability to hire for that are open right now for the city, and hopefully certain people are getting hints if we don't move forward with one of them. But, you know, I would like to see them in our organization because, to your point, Mayor, I think that our organization would be benefited by, by either one of these gentlemen filling other roles. But I don't know that either of them is fully qualified to take on this role at this time, particularly with basically a new council. And I'm including myself in that too, because I've only been on this council for less than three years. So I just, I have a concern from that standpoint. I, I think I kind of am feeling where the rest of my council members are with regards to, well, I'll see where the group kind of goes, and I can appreciate that because I do think that this should be a unanimous decision. This type- This type of decision needs to be 5-0. I'm not, and I'm not trying to say that, you know, if you don't want to vote for a candidate, don't be, I'm not asking you to feel forced to do that. But I think that it's very important that we set up a city manager for success, and if any of us expresses a lack of confidence in their ability to manage the city, I don't know that we're setting them up for success, and I don't know that that's fair to them. So, from that standpoint, I have a concern. I think like the rest of you, maybe I could be persuaded that the, maybe the budget isn't as big of a deal as I'm making it, but I, I feel like it's a pretty big roadblock that I'm having a very hard time getting over.
Vice Mayor, on the, I'm just looking at his resume when he was under the Wisconsin, so this is Paul Trambino, under the, Councilman Sullivan, can you hear me okay? Okay, I'll, I'll just continue. When, from 1994 until 2011, under the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, it says here, he led delivery of an annual $1 billion highway construction program, and also implemented executive-level project management for successful delivery of state, of a state mega project, which was $900 million, completed on time and on budget.
And I did see those things, councilman, and I don't want to belittle the importance of those, but those are on a project-by-project basis, and that's my concern, is we're not talking about different funds that have to, that, you know, there's certain transfers that can be made in and out of funds. You're dealing with a lot of moving parts when you're not just dealing with one project. So, out of the two, or you get bigger numbers, for sure, out of Mr. Trambino's resume, I think that, quite candidly, Mr. Huff has more experience in probably an overall picture of running a full comprehensive budget, but just on a much smaller scale. So, then you have to ask yourself, which one is more valuable? And I don't, I don't know. So, I, I hear you. I just, that's, that's my internal struggle that I'm having right now.
That's it? Vice Mayor? Okay, thank you. Like I said before, I think we'd be, we'd be quite fortunate to have either one of these gentlemen in our organization. I can say from, from an accounting perspective, as far as who you hire, it may not, no one looks at it in the grand scheme of things, but because of Mr. Huff's status as being a retired military member, you're saving a whole lot of money as far as benefits are concerned. Just for example, I think the acting city manager, her base salary right now, from the spreadsheet I saw, was like 187. She gets $68,000 in benefits. I can almost guarantee that you, that Mr. Huff is not gonna go for all those benefits in his packet because he doesn't need them, because he's like me and like Councilman Sullivan. He's retired military. That's off the table. He doesn't need that, especially if he kept Delta.
That's correct.
So, that's, that's a, that's a very high cost savings for the city. That's just something to consider. I'm not saying that should be your, your primary, your primary work, but I can tell you that saves the city a lot of money from a financial perspective. Yes, councilman?
Yeah, so, so Mr. Huff is on a different retirement system. He's on the Army Reserve Retirement System, and I don't think he's at age where he can start drawing it yet. Maybe I'm wrong, but I know for sure he, he's not at the age where he can draw a TRICARE. And so, but I see your point. You know, would that be an offset? I mean, it's something to consider, but he's, he's on the Army, he's an Army, he's, he has an Army Reserve Retirement, not an active duty retirement, which is two different things.
Anything else?
I did have a question is, for Mr. Thomas. Do we know what either one of these gentlemen would be requesting?
I just wanted to cut in for just one second. I went to, I'm sorry.
That ain't gonna work.
Yeah. I, I went to the normal Palm Coast station, and I can hear you fine. So, I'll, I'll go on mute, and then I can hear what you're saying. Okay.
All right.
Um.
Where are your, where are your earbuds?
Vice Mayor?
Get down.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We were getting some, we were getting some feedback when Councilmember Sullivan, I did the same thing. I was running kind of in the background, the, the live feed over the internet versus the Zoom feed that we have the challenge. I think you said you had some questions, but then we, we got mumble, mumble jumping in terms of the audio. You wanna try that again?
Sure, yeah, thank you. So, what is the salary ask from both of these gentlemen? Do we have those numbers?
Sure. So, well, let me, let me, before I jump on that one, if I can in the process. So, as I mentioned earlier, this is probably one of the most important, if not the most important, decisions you make as a, as a council. And so, it should be based upon who you feel is the most qualified regardless, and then it's a matter of getting into the negotiations with the individual that, that you ultimately select, assuming that you land this evening in a position. Now, Mr. Sullivan had raised the question about start dates and all that. I can tell you all the stuff that we can, if the commission, if the council is just, is inclined to make a decision tonight, I can bring up a slide to tell you, here are the things that typically you're gonna have to work your way through, and I would ask for a representative of the council that could work with myself and probably your attorney with, with some feedback from your HR department to make sure we've got a package that fits your policies and procedures. Now, so that is a sidebar note. Let me start first to talk a little bit about the background of budgeting. I, I think I was hearing you raise some concerns about the budgeting package and, and the size of the budget of Palm Coast versus some of the experiences. And so, I, myself as well as Michael can, can jump in on this if necessary, but the bottom line is, is that I'm, the, the nature of any of these positions that are executive in nature, they are going to have to manage a budget. They both have done some of that in the military, or one has done it in the military and also in a public works operation. Now, Mr. Trambino has done that at a state level and then also at a local level as well. So, I will tell you that that's a, it's a skill set that almost any executive needs to have for all the right reasons. You're not a small organization. There are different rules of the road in each state that you work with, but in many cases, in state government and in, in the local government, it's a fund accounting business, basis versus a cash accounting basis. So, you have different funds, and there are rules and regulations of what can be allocated and what pieces and how that all works out, and transfers between funds and things like that. So, I, I'm comfortable, I think, basically recognizing that, that I think that the question was, was whether Mr. Trambino had the skill set with a large budget. As Mr. Councilmember Gambero had mentioned, obviously, he had over a 17 billion, or seven, $7 billion budget in one of his positions, and then certainly a smaller operation, about a $270 million budget when he was in a different position in Iowa. Right now, it's about a $20 million budget. Obviously, he's more of a department head in a capital management project, so it doesn't, doesn't surprise me. That'd be a much smaller operation. If the concern is, do I think that he has the capacity to be able to manage the size of the budget you've got from a, from somebody that's been in that, in the role of a comparable-sized city? I moved from a very small budget to a very large budget when I moved from my previous city to, to the city of Lakeland. And the budget skills you learn are the same budget skills you apply. I made a joke that you're adding some extra zeros to the equation, but the concept of the budgeting process and allocating resources and making sure that you've anticipated contingencies and have appropriate levels of responsibility, I'm, I'm comfortable that that skill set is highly transferable, if that was a question or a concern there. With regards to your question on compensation, so the compensation, the candidates had expressed in the background material in their questionnaires, they, we had asked them basically what they thought they might be looking for in terms of salary and benefits to go into this position should they ultimately be selected. So, they both have responded to that question. That question, if you have your material before you, is question number, up here, it's question number 19 on both question, on both of the candidates' responses. So, in the material that was submitted, Mr. Trambino had indicated looking at a salary of 240 to 250, and the, the salary that Mr. Huff had indicated was much lower, at 160. I would highlight to the fact that you're currently paying your manager close to 190 plus at this point as an interim.
190.
And you've got some higher-level positions, you know, that would, would be bumping right into that lower salary level than Mr. Huff had indicated. I, I think you've got it, the position is what the position is. I've got some slides about some, what we see comparable managers making that I shared with the group earlier. And so, I think my recommendation is you ought to first focus on, do you have a candidate of these two that you're comfortable with? And then at that point, then we get into a negotiation process with who that might be selected, and work through the logistics of what the numbers are and how that works out. I have, in all the searches I've done, have only had one search where I wasn't able to reach an agreement with a candidate and a, and an organization to, to bring, bring parties together. So, my work for you, but my goal is to ultimately bring the parties together and find something that makes some sense that both parties can live with, if that makes sense.
Doug, thank you. When you say, when you say they're ask, that's, that's the base salary. I, I really don't, me personally, I don't like considering base salary. I, I like the total compensation packet, and, and, because that's your actual salary, and I just, I just want to make that clear, that those are base salaries Mr. Thomas is talking about.
That is, that is absolutely correct, Mayor. Typically, if it, if it would be helpful, I mean, I can show you a slide if desired about all the things that come forward. Salary certainly, everything, typically, your, your benefit ratio is between 25 to 30% on top of that.
Yes.
That can all be very based upon the individual nature of the area. So, those, that, that base salary is, is just that base salary. There's retirement and contributions for retirement and health insurance and all the other, you know, car allowances, all the other things that come with that.
Yep.
So, typically, we see that in that 25 to 30% type range to give you a ballpark of what that would look like.
And also, also depends on dependents, how many people, what kind of, what size family they're supporting, and what benefits they're gonna need for their, their husband, wife, and children.
Sure.
Any further comments from the dais?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I, you know, obviously, cost effectiveness is a factor, but I really don't think that viewing this from a lens of who's gonna cost us less is the best way to do that.
I didn't say that, councilman.
I didn't, I'm not even talking to you, Mr. Mayor, so.
Excuse me?
I have the floor, and I did not yield the floor to you.
One, one, point, point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order.
You were not recognized, so if you want to be fair.
The Vice Mayor had the floor.
But my point is, I said specifically, I said specifically, but that shouldn't be your total, your total look, but you should take that into consideration. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. So, I wasn't addressing your comment in any way. What I was doing was saying that we should not view this hiring from a lens of what's gonna cost us less because compensation and other things have been mentioned. I think we should be viewing it from a lens of who's going to do the best job and whether we think that person is going to do great for this city. If they are going to be that person, then they deserve whatever compensation we can negotiate with them because they're doing great things for our city. So, that's, that's the viewpoint that I want to look at it from. You know, obviously, everybody else is capable of viewing it from their own perspective, but I would advocate for that.
And I would agree with that, sir. Thank you. Anyone else from the dais?
Yes, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, I, I agree with the concept that we shouldn't be hiring based on what they've asked for. My, the reason for my question was, I don't want us to move forward with somebody that is outside of what we are, where we are willing to go. So, we have already looked at something close to what we have budgeted for. So, if somebody was way out of that, would be, would we be losing one to then eventually lose another because they don't accept, in other words? So, that's, that was the, the reason for that question, and I, I don't think that we have that issue here with either of those figures. I think that something could be negotiated with both of these gentlemen based on that, but I wanted to make sure of that before we move forward with anybody.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And, and the media out there, so, so actually, you should be paying someone a half million, a half million dollars, which that's totally absurd. Anything else, Councilman Gambero? Council, Councilman Sullivan, can you hear us? Anything? Anything? Is he with us?
It's about a 30-second delay. Mayor, he's listening from you two.
With that being said.
Uh, can you hear me?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I'm with you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted, I had that question concerning start date, and I know that's, that's something to be arranged, but I think maybe.
We can hear you, sir.
So, I just was wondering if we could talk a little about that. Is, are there limits if we made a decision tonight as to how far into the future we could push the start date? That would be my question.
Okay. Have you, have you had those conversations with them, Mr. Thomas, as far as how fast they could move and get their families here and get the work?
So, once again, we.
Prices are coming down on houses, so they could probably afford something here now.
Sure. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we lost, we lost the audio feed, or the video feed, so I don't, I don't know if someone's speaking now or not. I think that, I think, Mayor, you've asked if, if I have any idea about timing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha. So, I'm gonna direct you back to the, to the question responses that the candidates have provided in their questionnaire. Mr. Trambino had indicated that he would expect to start within three to four weeks after an office, after an agreement was reached. And Mr. Huff had indicated that, uh, he would be able to start in about six to eight weeks to organize the move. So, and realistically, what I will tell you from someone that negotiates hundreds of these agreements, typically, it all depends about the location and the unique dynamics. Normally, we see if there's a desire, and you've got an interim, and you don't, you've got a desire to have someone there immediately. Sometimes that can happen. If you do that, then sometimes you're in some temporary housing and that sort of thing in order to effectuate a move sooner than later. But typically, we see somewhere between 30 days to 90 days is a normal window, which will vary, you know, depending upon the nature of kids and locations and all that other factor. As I recall, I don't think either one of these individuals had kids that were in school, were obviously appearing, were getting to the end of the, you know, K-12 academic year anyways. But my sense is probably within 30 to 60 to 90 days, you would be able to effectuate and have a candidate in place, operating. And in the meantime, obviously, you do have an interim there, so it's not like you're in a, in a, in a gap where you, you can't, you need, need that sooner than later per se.
All right.
Does that address the question? As I said, the audio is really tough, but I think that's what I was being asked.
Yes, sir, thank you. With that being said, Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm moved that we appoint Mr. Huff to the position of city, city manager.
Just to get the record that shows the mayor passed a gavel to Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Can I get a second on that motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Gentlemen, Councilman Miller, second for discussion. Any further discussion from the dais?
I, I just, so, just for my comment, again, I, before we, and I know we have to go out to public comment and all that, so this is probably quite a ways off, but before we vote, I just, again, I think it's really important that whoever we bring in here, we want to set them up for the best success possible. And I think that we all need to take a really hard look at, you know, truly, what is the right thing? And somebody said it earlier, putting aside all personal agendas that may exist, what is the right decision? Even if coming in here, you weren't sure, what is the right decision for the future of our city? And how can we exude or exhibit the most confidence in this person coming in and instill that confidence that they likely need, particularly with a lot of the turmoil that we've been going through? So, I just, I just want to say that, make that general statement. And I know, like I said, we have a little while before we call the vote, but I think it's really important to keep that in mind.
It's on you.
Any other comment? All right, we'll go out to public comment.
Do you have to go up there?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Carol Stoughton, Palm Coast. And what will happen to the present person that's handling this matter? The city manager, what will happen to her? And what will happen to her assistant? Do they go away, or do they work with him?
Ma'am, this is public comment, so we will, we will certainly answer any questions that you have after public comment is over. So, we'll write those down and answer those, but it's not really a back and forth right now. So, do you have any other comment?
Three salaries, is it?
I'm sorry?
It's not gonna be three salaries to run the town.
We won't have three managers, three city managers. No, ma'am. But, but we'll answer all those logistical questions for you certainly at the end of public comment.
Because we're trying to cut expenses.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff Adams. Seems to me that we've gotten to a point, you're gonna have to make a decision. If you, I've hired a lot of employees in my life, and if you procrastinate. If you, I've hired a lot of employees in my life, and if you procrastinate and don't pick somebody, you'll lose them. So to go back through this process from start, from get to go, I don't think is very beneficial. If they don't perform or they don't match your expectations, eliminate them. It's that simple. I know that's what I did in business. I ran a $40 million a year business, and if they don't perform, you get rid of them. But at this point, I think the thing to look at is, if you got, don't bring me a problem. Bring me a solution. Or if you can't bring me a solution, then simply support what we do. So I think everybody needs to just decide, if this is the two best candidates you had, pick between the two of them, and they're probationary, or however you do that. I know that this is a little different scenario than just hiring general public, but to procrastinate, push us down the road, kick a can down the road does not benefit anybody. There are issues that have to be addressed. All these people have had them this evening with drainage and water and all that. That stuff needs to get off square one and move forward. And if we keep procrastinating and looking just at this particular problem, those never get resolved. And they're just going to get more expensive over time. That's my opinion, and, you know, don't throw rocks at my truck, okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, sir.
Candy Stevens, District 3. As you guys know, I was running for that seat, so I did a lot of homework on these city managers. I actually read all of the resumes until we cut down. So I'm going to say something, and I'm not trying to be mean, but I read all the resumes, and I was really impressed with one and sort of impressed with the other one. But then, I watched the interviews. Boy, did my two choices flip flop. I feel like one of the people has the same views that we have up here and that most of us have back here, and they can actually make a clear point and have ideas and continue their thought and make a clear point, and then go to the next point and make a point instead of talking in circles and circles and circles. So I too was impressed with the fact that Mr. Tribino has worked with President Trump. I've been a President Trump supporter since before he was president. But we can't use that as our only reason or one of the reasons, just like we can't use how much they want. We have to find somebody that's going to fit with what we have. We have a new council, three of you are military. I just think that another military person is really going to be what we need in that seat because you guys are going to have the same kind of thought process. And like I said, he could make a really clear point. Every time he was asked a question, he answered it, and he didn't ramble on, ramble on, ramble on, and so forth. And I know that's not a big deal, but I think somebody that's going to be the face of our city needs to be able to talk clearly and make a clear point, as well as perform the job duties like budgeting and prioritizing and all those things. So I would have, I would pick Mr. Huff also. He was not my first choice at first. He was my number two. Mr. Tribino was my first. But after I heard him speak and answer the questions that you asked, my mind was changed, and I think that's probably what Mr. Sullivan was getting at when he made his comments earlier. And just remember, you can't use President Trump. If you want to use President Trump, who's bombastic and outspoken and steps on toes and hurts people's feelings, then you can't judge him that way. Pick it or don't.
Thank you for your comment.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. Let me try to understand this right. Whoever we hired, we're talking about $256,000 is the salary. Now we're going to have to worry about finding a house. Okay. But are we going to pay him his salary while he does all his moving expenses? Now, none of yous were up here the last time we went through this, so let me try to quickly refresh your memories. We needed to replace our city manager. They had 94 people apply for the job. When all was said and done, we were down to four. Well, the one that got hired was not one of the four. So, and we know how that turned out. But the problem was that we had, because that particular person was not really the person we should have chosen, or you should have chosen, we ended up having another director, actually. The fire chief had to help run the city in addition to running the fire department. So I don't know what the big hurry is. Why are we such in a hurry to get a new city manager? They can't be, we were looking for someone, and the Vice Mayor made the comment that neither one of the candidates, neither one of the two, have the experience of running a city that's the size of Palm Coast and spends the money that we have to spend in this city. So why are we hiring, or why are we even looking at somebody who, number one, doesn't have the experience? Number two, has nothing to do with Florida, except they know where it is. One lives in Colorado, one lives in Wisconsin, I think. So unless they know exactly what is going to be required, how can we even consider interviewing somebody who, it's like trying to go out and hire a professional baseball player who's never played baseball before. So I don't know what the big hurry is, but maybe somebody up there can explain what the big hurry is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. David Ferguson. I agree with Ms. Pontieri that it should be unanimous if you're going to work together. But based on Mr. Gambaro and the mayor's suggestions as to who you prefer, it doesn't look like it'll be unanimous vote. So maybe we should look at your votes when they were presented en masse, when you ranked them. You gave them a one, two, or three, and you selected the finalists based on those ones, twos, and threes. Unfortunately, two of the people decided, three of the people decided they weren't interested. So we're left with the two candidates. And I was here and met them both last week, and I watched their presentations to the council last week. They're impressive people, but are they the ones you really want? Are you settling because you're desperate to have a city manager? I hope not. But let me remind you how you rated these people at the beginning. I have each of your votes because you made it public, which was my gripe last week, Mayor. I'm sorry you missed it because I actually had some things pointed at you as well. I'd be glad to share them with you privately if you care. But as far as Mr. Gambaro and Mr. Miller and Ms. Pontieri and Mr. Norris, you all ranked Smith number one. He was the guy. And it would have been easy if he'd have come here, but now he went somewhere else. Then the number two person, Mr. Tribino and Mr. Huff, were the choices of Mr. Gambaro and Mr. Miller. Those were two and three. Ms. Pontieri, you didn't like any of the people other than Mr. Smith. Did they change your mind last week, or are you just getting nervous about not having a permanent city manager? I don't know. I wasn't impressed with them as being the guy. They could do it. They might learn how to do it, just like the current acting city manager and the previous acting city manager. They learned and they carried the ball respectfully. So my point is, maybe you should try the exercise I suggested last week when you were missing, Mayor. Rank them.
Please, please, please respect the speaker.
Are you going to control these people? Or are you just going to let them out?
Mr. Ferguson, I have the gavel. Please finish your comment.
Why don't you do what I suggested? Put your vote in publicly. Rank, you want Mr. Huff? You give him a one. Then give Mr. Tribino a two, and take the tally. Mr. Sullivan, you'll have to do it somehow or another way, but make it public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
And I don't appreciate...
All right, Mr. Ferguson, I ask them to...
Please take control of these people.
I have the gavel. It's not the mayor. Please take your seat, and let's be respectful of the speakers, please. Mr. McDonald.
A little reality check. One of the, what I'd like to ask here that might help out a lot is talk about something that's really key that all you've said is budget. Okay, you always talk about budget, money. I like money. I like to talk about budgets all the time, having done them all those years. I would like this gentleman on the screen here, Doug, to talk more about a point that he made that certainly rang true for me, okay, from my experience, is that he's made some comment about the fact that he was in a small city, and then he moved to Lakeland. And I know that Lakeland is a pretty big city in Florida. So that's a really interesting experience to play on, and so maybe you need to ask Mr. Thomas to give us his insight to you folks, okay, as to what that was like and how it was either successful for him or unsuccessful, because that may be a path that may lead to an answer here. So, you know, it really comes down to the budget aspect. I think that's what all of us are concerned about, you know, what's going on with the utilities and the other things that are out of control here. So if you could ask Mr. Thomas, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Lang.
Eddie Lang, R Section, Palm Coast. So I don't envy your decision today. It's going to be a difficult one. I actually also agree with Mr. Miller, which I don't very often, but I do right now. The, I don't think you have a rock star. The person with the most experience, the city manager, is our intern. I mean, she, I would personally change the charter and, because she lives in Flagler, and let her continue doing the work. She has more experience than both of them when it comes to managing a city of this size. And, I mean, the two candidates that we have, I watched their interviews, read their resumes, read their bios. I mean, I think they have experience, they have the knowledge. Could they do the job? I'm sure both of them could do the job, but just being able to do the job, or do we want that rock star? And listen, I know we need a city manager, and I feel the pressure too, just as a citizen. I feel like we need to have a permanent city manager and stop this intern, but do we want to just take a city manager just to take a city manager? If we don't have that rock star, what are we doing? Because, you know, like one of my fellow citizens said, I mean, we can hire them and see how it goes, and then you just get rid of them if they don't do the job. But do we want to keep doing that too? Because we're not going to get candidates if city managers keep coming in. I've been in Palm Coast for a while, but I've been through a lot of city managers already. So we, I don't envy your decision. I trust that you guys will make decisions. I do believe that you should have an anonymous vote. I mean, I would, it'd make me feel more comfortable that you guys are sticking together on this. But at this point in time, you know, our current intern city manager has more experience, and I would be happy if she stuck around and, you know, we changed the charter, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else for public comment? Ms. Henry.
Denise Henry, P Section. I came and sat through all the interview. I also came to the meet and greet and talked to each of them personally. I believe my choice would be Mr. Huff. He gave, I think, better answers when I asked him about budget. He's more about efficiency. I told him that, you know, our issue is we need, we need money for infrastructure, so, you know, he was, he sounded more like the person that was willing to be able to adjust the budget and get rid of fluff or whatever. Also, with Mr. Tribino, during the interview, he seemed to be that it was going to take him 60 days, and then in six months, and then in a year. But with Mr. Huff, he said in 30 days, just give him 30 days. And I felt that was a much better answer. Plus, Mr. Tribino was mentioning education. The city of Palm Coast really doesn't have anything to do with education, school board does. So I just think that the answer is more for me goes to Mr. Huff. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I wasn't going to comment, but from an HR perspective, if you are really uncomfortable or unsure, it's really not that simple to put somebody in a position and then remove them, whether that determined space of time is six months or a year. Contractually, there could be a buyout, that then you have to finish that portion of a contract. Also too, you paid for their relo, which is relocation package, and it might be that you have to relocate them back to their original position, back to their home state, whichever state you choose, the Wisconsin candidate or the Colorado candidate. But in addition to that, you have to take into consideration that our most qualified person, Ms. Johnson, that if she would have to reassume that role for whatever space of time that either candidate has been in that role, you don't know what she's walking back into. And then she has to regather or reinvent the wheel, or whatever damage, or whatever files, or whatever state of mind the state of business of Palm Coast has changed while she's been absent from that role. So budget could have been changed, files could have been changed, whatever had been done with city charters or contracts or whatever, while that person was in that role. And then she has to untie those knots or figure out what's been done. So it's really not that simple to say that somebody will try the role, see how it makes out, we can dismiss them as an employee. She has to then go in and say, I left it so perfect, everything was running like a top. Then she has to redo that job all over again. And that's a lot of work for her and the entire staff. So it's not just try them out, or they shadow her for three months or whatever, and then that job gets transferred back to her, whatever candidate. It doesn't matter how super they are or not. So it's really a very high-level job to do as a sampling to see whether or not the candidate works out. This is a very high-level position we're trying to fill here, so I would tread very lightly on your decision. I would go with caution. That was my advice.
Thank you, Ms. McGevna. Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Jim Davis. When I was watching the interviews, one of them stood out to me, and he was talking about transparency, and we definitely need that here, and that would be Mr. Huff.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais. Do we have any responses to the public comment? We'll start with you, Mr. Gambaro.
I think that, I'm glad we had the weekend to think about this because it's been, for me, it's been a lot of deliberation. For me to make the comment, you know, at the beginning of this agenda item that, you know, naturally, I gravitate towards the military guy was a hard one for me. But I looked at the requirements that we have for the city and the direct experience, public safety, infrastructure, transportation, all the certifications, and the fact that he's been a CEO, and I'm, of course, referencing Mr. Tribino, is what stood out to me. But I appreciate all the input that everybody's given tonight. We've got a lot of challenges in our utilities, a bunch of different areas, and I just think from a requirements perspective, if who we need and has the experience to help lead in this area, I still think Paul is the best choice.
Councilman Miller.
One on Mr. Huff. He said that this was going to be his last move. So wherever he lands, his next job is going to be his last move. And I don't know if he mentioned to the rest of the council, but when I had my conversation, unless I'm, you know, lost my mind, he had mentioned something about his wife being a mayor. So did he mention that to you, Vice Mayor? So he knows about politics.
He announced it at the meet and greet as well, Mayor.
So he knows about politics and, you know, he's a Sapper Ranger, not Ranger, he's a Sapper engineer. I have every confidence that either one of those gentlemen can do the job, but I feel for our city at this time and its history, Mr. Huff is what would be my personal choice. And I'd be perfectly happy with either one of these gentlemen.
Councilman Sullivan, do you have any comment?
Was that to me?
Yes.
If I were forced to make a decision tonight, I would tend to go to Richard Huff at this point. Doesn't mean I'm going to be satisfied with the other person, but I think public presentation and ability to instill confidence, that would be the primary reason I would... and ability to instill confidence, that would be the primary reason I would probably tend to go to, to Mr. Huff at this point, because I think that's an important part of the job. And I think they both are gonna have to learn a lot, and that, that's where I am right now.
Thank you, Councilman. So, I do want to respond to the question, I, I lost, I lost her. She had a couple, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the woman who had the questions about...
That's Carol.
Thank you, in the back. Carol, okay, thank you. I see your arm, thank you. So, what would happen is Assistant City Manager would go back down to her previous role. So, we wouldn't have, we, we wouldn't have the same...
What would that salary be?
Structure. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's what, she would go back to the exact same role that she had previously, so... Ma'am, I don't know the logistics. We can definitely get you those answers, but she would, we wouldn't have two city manager roles and salaries, so that's not, that shouldn't be a concern. As far as my, do we have feedback?
Mr. Sullivan, can you mute, please?
I hate hearing myself the first time around, much less a second. Thank you, thank you. I, I, I gotta tell you, I really am struggling. So, Ms. Stevens, I, I share your opinion initially. I was very, very impressed with Mr. Trambino's resume. I was not as impressed when we did the video interviews. And then I said, "Well, maybe, you know, there's a, just, we'll see when they come in person." And I think that both of these gentlemen presented kind of the, the talking points that we all like to hear, transparency, vision, you know, fiscal responsibility, those types of things. But to me, they were both lacking in certain areas, and I, I kinda shared Councilman Sullivan's sentiment earlier as well, which was, "Man, I wish we could really just meld them together and create one person, and then we'd be great." I gotta tell you, for the decision that this is, for what our city has been going through, I think it's imperative that we just, we, we don't, we don't settle, and that we do pick the right person, and that we, I, I hear what you're saying about Mr. Huff, this being his last place, but if he gets here and is not able to do the job, I would hate to move him or anybody else across the country for a probationary period, or, you know, even a year or two. I don't think that that's fair to either one of them. And I don't know that that would happen, maybe they would be great. But at this point, I'm really struggling with regards to whether or not either one of them have every quality that we need in a candidate to do the job for this city. So, I'm, I'm just really having a hard time from that standpoint. I, I walked in here with, with a sentiment towards this decision, and I have to say, I've really tried to be open-minded, but I feel very conflicted, and I, I'm just not, I'm not sold on either one of them at this point.
Call the question.
All right, I'll call the vote. Well, before I do that, any other comment from my council members? All right, we'll call the vote.
Mayor Norris.
Yes.
Councilmember Gambero.
No.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Councilman Sullivan, yes or no?
You're on mute. You're on mute.
You're muted.
Councilmember Sullivan, if you, if you press your spacebar or the audio button, you're, you're on mute, we can't hear you.
Okay, you should, you should be able to hear me now.
You're good.
I got two things going on at the same time here. Are, are we voting right now? I've, I've lost, when I try to go back to the council, it's hard to understand. Are we voting out for a specific candidate right now?
Yes, Commissioner Sullivan, the motion is to appoint Mr. Richard Huff as its city manager.
Okay, yes. The answer is yes.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
No.
The motion fails.
Is there...
I had the gavel again. Does anyone else wanna make a, a, a motion for Mr. Trambino?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Mr. Paul Trambino as our city manager.
We have, we have a motion. Second? Mr. Sullivan?
I'll second for discussion.
We have second.
I think it's only fair since I did it for Mr. Huff.
We have a, a second for discussion. Discussion, I think we've already, we've already beat that drum. Any more discussion from the dais? Open up the public comment. Anyone have any public comment? See no one come forward? Bring it back to the dais, any further comment?
No, sir.
Call, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McDonald.
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Now I'm really confused. We voted, you voted, and it came out three no's and two yeses. But when a resident asked the vice mayor how much the salary was, I don't know. Well, wait a minute, how do you hire somebody and you don't know how much we're gonna pay him? Do we pay him a half a million dollars? Do we pay him a million dollars? Do we pay him all his expenses to get here? Nobody knows. It's like, we're trying not to hide something, but we're trying not to tell everybody really what's going on. Now, if you voted three to two against him, that's the end of the discussion. Why are we continuing if the, if the council voted no?
We've moved on to the next candidate, Mr. McDonald. And the, the, the salary is, is a contract. The city manager is a contact, contract position. Any further discussion from the dais?
No, Mayor.
Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
No.
Councilmember Gambero.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Norris.
Yes.
The motion passes three to two.
We'll, we're gonna have a new city manager, folks. Thank you very much. We'll move on, we'll move on to final discussion, public...
Mr. Mayor, sorry, before we move forward, you, this council needs to direct someone to negotiate.
Okay, I would like to handle, I would like to discuss that real quick. I'm getting ready to leave the country, so I would, I would ask for consensus that the vice mayor negotiate that contract for that, that gentleman's salary.
Do you have my consensus? Yeah.
My consensus?
Same for me.
Consensus, Mr. Sullivan, are you good with that? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
Of course, yes.
Are you good with that? Mr. Sullivan, are you good with that?
Uh, yeah, again, it's really hard for me to hear clearly. But what was, what, what did you say? Say it again, Mayor, I'm trying to...
The Vice, the Vice Mayor is gonna be point on negotiating the contract with Mr. Trambino.
I agree.
Thank you, sir. That's all we had, right, Marcus? We good?
Let's just check with Mr., uh, Mr. Thomas, is anything else he needs from us?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, do you need anything else from us?
Yes, so, appreciate that, thank you. I realize this is a difficult decision. I think what's, what I've, what I've heard is you appointed on a three-two basis, and that Vice Mayor Pontieri has been designated from the council to assist. My recommendation would be that myself, the Vice Mayor, and typically your city attorney get together and we can walk through some of the background items. You, you have a fairly recent and contemporary agreement that I've looked at from your previous manager. There are some points we need to work through to work through the negotiation with the selected candidate. That would ultimately come back to you as a public body for consideration. But typically, to work through the dynamics of this, to have a representative designated, we can work through that, and your, your attorney has already got a pretty good template that we can work as a starting point from as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. If the, if the two candidates are still listening, I really appreciate both of you coming down and interviewing with us. Richard, I, I think you did an outstanding job, and you would have been a great city manager also. And Paul, congratulations on your selection, and I look forward to you coming to our city and making things happen. Anyone else have comments for the candidates before we close out that discussion?
Yes, just to echo your comments, Mayor, and I thoroughly enjoyed Mr. Huff meeting you and your wife, and greatly appreciate all of your diligence and your candor with us. Thank you so much for your commitment and your willingness to join the city of Palm Coast. And Mr. Trambino, definitely looking forward to working with you, sir.
Anyone else? Councilman Miller?
Yes, sir. You know, just wanna echo the same thing. These interview, the interview process is not easy. You know, it feels like a, you know, you're going through your, your resume and kind of saying what, what about you is valuable.
Can we please?
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hold it down, please?
And so, it feels kind of like an indictment on yourself when, when you're not selected, and that's not the case. I think both candidates were very good candidates, and I'm happy that, that we've come to a conclusion and, and moved forward as a city.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Gambero, you have anything?
Yeah, at, at the beginning, I, I said I wish we could have hired them both. But we had to make a selection, and, and so, Mr. Huff, I wish you the best, and Mr. Trambino, it's time to get to work.
Councilman Sullivan, do you have any follow-up?
Yes, I, I wanna say to Mr. Trambino, you, you did a great job, you're well-qualified for the job, but I chose Mr., Mr. Huff, and congratulations to you, Richard, and look forward to working with you and making Palm Coast better than ever.
Point of order. Point of order, uh, I'm sorry.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
You, you voted to select Count, Mr. Trambino, Paul Trambino, the second candidate. You voted in the affirmative to appoint him as the city manager.
Okay, I, all right. Well, I, I was trying to vote for Mr. Huff, I thought I did.
No, you did, that was the first round. On the second round, you voted for Mr. Trambino.
All right, I, well, okay, well, I'm, I was a little convi, it's very hard to understand everything that's going on.
We went through both correctly.
I will leave it, I will leave it at that. I said I was okay with either candidate, and therefore, if that's, if that has to be the way it is, but it was a mistake on my part based on the audio.
City Attorney, we need an opinion on this, this is not...
He voted in the affirmative on both of them.
I understand.
I, I am, uh, this is what we're gonna do, I recommend that you guys do a revote to clarify the record.
Okay, we'll, we'll go through...
Where, where are, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh...
Councilman Sullivan, we are, we are voting on whether to appoint Mr. Paul Trambino as...
All right, I'm, I'm fine with that at this point.
Hold on just a second.
Give him a 30-second delay for him to respond.
Yes, Ms. Cook, please call the question. Please call the question.
This is going to be a revote for a motion to appoint Mr. Trambino to the city manager position. Vice Mayor Pontieri?
No.
Councilmember Gambero?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Councilmember Sullivan?
This is, just make sure I heard it correctly, this is for Paul Trambino. Is that right?
Yes.
No.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion fails, three to two.
Okay. I thought we were going home, but I guess not. For, for another round, we're gonna need someone that voted in the affirmative on the first one to make a, a motion, correct?
That's one option, or the other option is to move forward without the candidates and give direction.
I don't, I don't, I don't want that to happen. So, is anyone willing to nominate one of the other candidates? Either or the candidates, if you voted in the affirmative and no in the last rounds, the last two rounds.
So, what Mr. Mayor is asking is anyone that voted in the negative would like to do a motion for reconsideration. So, we're just doing the motion for reconsideration, that's one part. If we get past that part, then you would do an actual motion to vote.
So, is anyone willing to make a motion to reconsider either one of these candidates?
Make a motion to consider Richard Huff for the position.
Thank you, sir. Anyone for a second?
He can't, he voted yes.
You can't do that, Mr., Mr. Sullivan.
I can't do, I cannot do that?
You cannot, because you voted in the, you voted in the, in favor of the last time. So, we'll need someone else to make the motion.
Okay.
That voted no. Come on, Councilman Gambero, guy's retired military colonel.
What I'd also advise is reach out to Mr. Doug Thomas, since he is our consultant, he can also advise on options as well.
Do we have anyone who wants to make a motion of the no votes? I voted no for Mr. Trambino, right? I mo, I motion, I motion...
I thought you voted yes for both of them.
I voted, oh, I can't do anything.
You're the only one that can.
One of you guys is the only one that can.
My, my only suggestion, and this is to try to lay at least my concerns, I don't know if anybody else has the budget concerns, but perhaps if both candidates are willing to do a white paper or a short presentation on their experience handling budgets, again, this is just for me, I, I don't know if this would benefit anybody else on council, but I'm, I'm trying to maybe get us there. But that's my suggestion for Mr. Thomas, if, if the candidates are willing to put something together, and if, and if we get consensus from council to maybe at least get me there for one of them.
Mr. Mayor, I gotta just advise, can you please advise the audience that this is silence, there's no public comment right now? No one should be talking other than the people of the dais.
I, I can't hear them anyway. For the, for the public, please keep it down, let us work this out. So, we'll, we'll go one more round. Is there anyone that wants to make a, a motion for either one of these, these candidates that did not pass, where you voted no?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know, I know your legal counsel's there, is it appropriate that I maybe chime in and, and give you some insights?
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. It's, it's clear the, the council is somewhat deadlocked in terms of your process. I had, and I think I heard Vice Mayor Pontieri make a suggestion, I had one other search where there was a desire for a council, it was in a different, different state, a desire for a council to reach agreement on, and consensus on a candidate. And because there were still some uncertainties that were out there, what they decided to do is, I, I said, "All right, what else, what else would you like potentially either or both of the candidates?" Or at that point, they were narrowed down to two. And we actually had them prepare some additional material that were presented to give the council a chance to kind of address or assage their concerns. You know, I think you, you need some stability in this position, you've gone through a number of managers in recent years. We want you to be successful, we want the person to come in to have the ability to have support of the council. So, I would offer, if there was something that would help your governing body reach consensus, that maybe still has an outstanding question about one or both of these candidates, that there may be, you know, we could talk about what those concerns might be, and maybe there's an ability to, to just do one, one last round of something, whatever that might look and feel like, to make sure if that, if that helps you build, build a consensus around a, a candidate, and, and addresses any potential concerns that you might have about either one of them. So, I just throw that as an option, if that might help you, because I think it's really important that you find some common ground on, on a decision.
Could I just say one thing real quick? I, I can understand Mr. Thomas perfectly clearly, it's the audio from, from the, from the podium that's, that's the problem, but, could, well, okay, I just wanted to make that clear. So, if, if there's gonna be any more votes, please make sure I understand the, the motion before I vote.
Okay, Councilman Sullivan, would you like to make a motion for either one of these gentlemen? You can only do one, because you voted in the, the negative, meaning no, on Mr. Trambino. Would you be willing to motion to...
I will make a motion that we reconsider for, for Palm Coast City Manager Paul Trambino.
Okay, is that good enough, legal counsel?
Yeah, we just need a second.
Second. Okay, so we're just motion to reconsider, right? And we have to vote on that?
Yes.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, call the, the vote, Ms. Cook?
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
No.
Councilmember Gambero?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Oh, hold on. Councilman Sullivan, you are voting, you, you are voting for the, to motion to reconsider, yes or no?
Yes, to reconsider.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes three to two.
Okay, we have a, a motion to reconsider... Okay, we have a motion to reconsider. No, that was the vote to reconsider.
Yeah.
Councilman Sullivan, would you make your motion as you were previously going to do?
I will make a motion to select Paul Trambino as the Palm Coast City Manager.
Thank you, sir.
I second the motion.
We got a second, so we can discuss. Any further discussion? See, no further discussion. I will open it up for public comment for a quick round. Anyone have anything to say? Seeing no one come... Okay, C.D. C.D. and Carol. Yes, sir.
On your concern about budgets, he, as an engineer, and he's done large budgets, the city departments, that's broken into separate budgets in my mind and from what I've done. I would look at it from that standpoint versus the whole thing, because it comes down to you approve the various budgets at those levels. So it's not an issue where he has not done a huge one, but he's done large, small ones, which is really what happens in the city budgeting process. I would ask you to consider that, and $900 million is not a small number.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Jeff, I'll just, the people just think about what they wanted to have as this manager. They'll go from there.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Carol.
Carol Stone, S-section. My question to you was, you had talked about the salaries. Each one was talking about, which one is the, which one was the higher one? Which was the candidate that had the higher amount, 200 and...
If that's your only question, Carol, Mr. Trambino's ask was higher than Mr. Huff's.
It was like $100,000 difference?
No, it wasn't that much, but there was a difference in the two.
Okay. I would go for the lower one.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
The F-section.
Hold it down, please. Hold it down.
Unbelievable. You really should wear clown suits when you come up here, seriously. So you all like to spend our money like that. That much difference in salary plus benefits? You're going to be at 300K. Yet you want to give us a 30% utility increase. You guys are nuts.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Yeah, you know, before you vote, which obviously it looks like it's going to go a certain way. I mean, I think the indecisiveness that we're having, there's no reason to pick somebody right now. I mean, I'm sorry, but the indecisiveness that we're seeing, obviously nobody's got a full confidence in what we're choosing. I don't think this should go through. You should all say no, and we need to figure it out. And I, trust me, I hear what you guys are going through, and you have to, we have to have a similar manner. I get it. I get it. But you're indecisive, and yeah, both candidates are good, but they're not great. So I think we need to really rethink what you're going to do here before you make this vote.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Carol Stone, I tried to listen to the figures, and I think it was close to $60,000 more. Keep that in mind with your budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no one come...
That's mine.
Ms. Mac, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Denise Henry, P-section. I guess I'm a little confused with Mr. Sullivan because originally he voted yes to Huff and really thought he voted no to Mr. Trambino, but then he's reconsidering him. And I just really think I did not feel as comfortable with Mr. Trambino. I mean, yes, he's had good positions, but also he, I don't know. Anyway, I don't feel as comfortable with him.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Bring it back to the dais. Any further comment?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, council.
As I mentioned last week on a vote, and our vice mayor mentioned this week, we'd like to have a unanimous vote. I still feel the same way, and I don't think we have a unanimous vote here on either candidate. So I would not change my position and feel that without a unanimous vote, I don't think we are able to select a candidate.
Ms. Cook, call the vote, and I would like you to start. So she's calling the vote, Councilman Sullivan, and it's going to be yes or no for Paul Trambino to be the next city manager.
Right.
The motion is to appoint Mr. Trambino, I'm sorry, to select Mr. Trambino for the city manager. Councilmember Sullivan?
No.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
No.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion fails.
Okay, we'll move forward. We'll take that vice mayor. I will go with the vice mayor's recommendations, Mr. Thomas, that we have both gentlemen write a two-page white paper on their budgets that they have handled in their careers. Do I have consensus on that?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have consensus. So Mr. Thomas, if you could have the two, what do we look at? City manager, what are we looking at as far as the next time we can bring this to council, have the white papers delivered, have us read them, and then go from there?
That's at your pleasure, Mayor. Your next business meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 6th at 6:00 PM. Then you have a workshop scheduled for Tuesday, May 13th at 6:00 PM. But just like this meeting today, you're welcome to have a special meeting regarding this topic. It's at your pleasure of how you want to proceed.
How soon do we have to post a notice to the public?
I always recommend seven days.
Seven days? Do we have to do seven days? Is it in statute that we have to do seven days?
It's a recommendation from the Attorney General. So if it's, what would you like to do, Mr. Mayor?
I would like to do Friday at 6:00 PM.
If I could jump in for one second?
These gentlemen have worked with budgets before. They could probably write a two-page white paper in 30 minutes. We could do it tonight if we wanted to stick around.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're asking that the council meet this Friday?
This Friday at 6:00 PM with the white papers. Do you think they could have white papers done by then, Mr. Thomas?
My recommendation is, I mean, this is a pretty important thing that you're asking them to do. I'm not suggesting... I have no idea. I haven't talked to them about their availability or anything of that nature. My suspicion is, it's Tuesday night now. To ask for a Friday, we would not normally ask a candidate to jump through a hoop that fast. Then we would probably suggest that you give them at least the week and the weekend to put together whatever it is. But I also want to chat a little bit about what exactly is being asked of that in that white paper, because that can, you know, I've heard a broad statement about addressing a budget, but I certainly would like to have a little more dialogue so I can give clarity, so that they know exactly what you're asking them to do and that they have sufficient time to do it.
Guarantee you that a combat engineer can write a white paper by Friday. He's been under more fire than that. What was your recommendation?
I would suggest if the next meeting is a business meeting, I would suggest that we have it by the next business meeting, which is Tuesday, May 6th. But whether it's a two-page white paper or a 10-minute PowerPoint presentation, something that just lets us know from a budgetary standpoint, what have these gentlemen handled, the mechanics of it, the amounts, what it was. Was it just one project? Was it the same, you know, those types of things. So I'll leave it to my colleagues with regards to, you know, more granular details as to what you all would like to see in the case that you'd like to see something.
I support the next business meeting as well.
I do as well. I think it's already been noticed, so.
So we can just add it to the agenda on the next business meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go with May 6th. You think you can make that happen, Doug?
I can. Well, I've got to talk to the candidate, so let me get in touch with them first and foremost and figure that out. What time is the meeting on the 6th?
It's at 6:00 PM.
Okay. By happenstance, I'm going to be in the area on the 6th. I have another, I'm facilitating a strategic planning process up in your neighborhood, a follow-up meeting next Tuesday. If it could be a little later, if it could be later in the agenda, I might be able to finish up that meeting and slide up and be physically there to help through this conversation.
So that's Tuesday at 6. Could they have, if you could work it out with them, to have the papers to us by the 5th, so we could read over them? And then we will add a relook at hiring a city manager on the 6th during that business meeting. Are we clear with that, city manager?
Yes, Mayor. Understood.
Okay. Anything else? I'm hoping, I'm sure Mr. Huff is probably sitting back drinking a beer right now saying, what the hell's going on? So anything else from the council?
No, nothing.
Okay. Last round of public comment. Anyone, please? Yes, Mr. McDonald.
And just a reminder, this is public comment. That is not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda. This is our closing public comments to close out the meeting.
Not on the agenda. Yeah, I just wanted to comment on what went on with Mr. Ferguson because, you know, he came out right in front of me there, and it was, I just know that Mr. Ferguson was really upset when he didn't get selected for the seat that Dave's in right now. I know he was spouting off when I came out. He was right behind me. He just never got called on. He never, nobody ever gave him any acknowledgement or anything like that at all. It was either, it was just two candidates, and he was really upset by it. It's pretty concerning to see him tonight, you know, that he was still upset by it, you know, many, many days later. So in my mind, you made the right choice, or certainly, you know, but I just want to let you know that if you're going to do that again and having a selection process, that you give everybody an opportunity to be heard and give them a shot at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further? Yes, sir.
Yeah, just when they write that paper to you, see if they have any suggestions how they could improve the city or where their directions are for the city. So you have an idea for that, too.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, Bruce. How can we help you, sir?
I don't know if you remember, but it must have been about five, six weeks ago. There was a resident that lives in Palm Coast, and he actually made the suggestion that you start challenging some of the developers that are coming into this town. And I'm just wondering if the city council has ever gone with that approach or anything along those lines. No answer. I get it. Also, I'd like to put a motion in, and this was done when Holland was mayor. She had it where open sessions would be allowed, that we get some answers from city council on the spot. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Ms. Mac, you coming? Oh, the baby doggy. I didn't notice that. Look at that. Yes, ma'am.
The F-section.
Yes, ma'am.
Two things. Nobody has ever addressed, oh, I'm sorry.
Can you pull it down a little? Yes, ma'am.
No one has ever addressed the $120 million that was spent by tax dollars for the infrastructure out West. Why is nobody looking into that? That was when the developer was supposed to pay for it back in 2010. He did an agreement in writing to pay for it, but yet we paid for it. So that's a big, huge oops when you've got three or four different attorney firms here, a city manager, and nobody caught that. Why did nobody catch it, and why isn't anybody going after him to get our money plus interest? My second item tonight to address to you all is, okay, so we paid for the representatives that we hire on contract, so that's an expense. Then we paid for city council members to go up to Tallahassee, so we got hit twice on that to send all those people up there. Nobody's ever come back to us in the public to let us know what monies were gotten. Nothing's been mentioned. Additionally, nobody in this city staff has given us a breakdown on what we're actually looking at cost-wise on this huge, humongous utility hike that you gave us. I don't know if you all realize it, but in two more years from now, with all this 30%, our utility bill's going to be like $250 a month plus. And bullshit, excuse my French, on this reserve your water. I'm going to use it as much as I can because you're charging us like it's gold. And why has nobody told us what monies you got from Tallahassee? Everybody's silent on it. Nobody talks about it, do you? You're giving me blank looks. I'm more experienced than any of you all sitting up there from government experience, and I'm sick of this. Y'all should be ashamed.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Carol.
Carol Stone, when is there going to be a moratorium vote against mass development? And what is the situation of our water supply and the crumbling roads and people having to put in new storm pieces underneath their driveways that are crushing and collapsing? Who is going to have the nerve to stop letting developers run our town? For the past five years, it's development after development. Do they pay the salaries of our fire department? Do they buy the trucks? Do they pay for the ambulances? This has got to stop. There's a moratorium in Edgewater right now. Please, we live here. We don't need a Miami in Palm Coast. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Carol, number two. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I agree with her. There really should be a moratorium on the building here in Palm Coast. I'm on Seminole Woods, and we're very close to where that development is coming in. I don't know what the consensus was. It was 400 homes or 800 homes. I knew there was a big thing about that. But when they put in the piping along there, they took down one of the signs coming around to Sesame Boulevard, the second Sesame Boulevard, that sign that was up there letting you know that that road was right there is down. Y'all should look into that, getting that back up and everything. I went to a TPO meeting, Vision 1, the other couple of weeks ago, and I had several suggestions to them on what they could do for safety and the growth that we're experiencing. Seminole Woods is going to have to become a four-lane with all of these additional buildings going on and stuff, because I drive there to US-1 every morning, and I see what's going on over there. And the traffic is going to be standstill and horrendous once they get all of those buildings in there. So we really do need to have a moratorium on that. No more annexing, you know, the annexing, poor Banelle. Palm Coast is here and there, all around Banelle. I guess that's all I have. I'm not a normal public speaker, so.
Thank you, Ms. Carol. Yes, Ms. Johnson.
Leslie Johnson, P-section.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little perturbed tonight, more than perturbed. I think I can say I'm angry. I'm going to have to ask the Almighty Above to work that out in my heart. Somebody up there has lost my respect. I'm not happy about it. Do these candidates know how contentious you are? Do they understand that when they come in, they may be breaking up fights because he said this, she said that, little so-and-so was crying in the corner because somebody said something shit, just went up her butt sideways with thorns? Okay, cut it out. Cut it out. I'm very disappointed that four of you decided to gang up on an absent member, the mayor. You will respect that seat. That's all I have to say on that subject. Don't make me get my stick. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything, anyone else with public comment? City manager, have we, that's not the first time that sign has come up in Seminole Woods. If we checked into that, I think it was mentioned at the last meeting.
I'm sorry, the sign?
The sign in Seminole Woods coming around that Carol was talking about?
We'll look into it, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, that's, I've heard that before. Anything else? Bring it back to the dais. That's the only concern I have with that. Closing comments from the city council members?
If I may, Mayor, I just, okay, factually, I want to clear up a few things because I continue... I continue to see this on social media, and it continues to be brought up in this meeting, or in these meetings, and I wish Ms. Mac were still here, she left. The hundred and twenty million dollars for the Westward expansion that she continues to talk about, that was state appropriated money, came from, came from Tallahassee as a part of two years' worth of state appropriations, yes, and the development orders for the DRIs for the Westward expansion, it says that the developer, landowner, I, I can't remember which, it may have been one and the same at that time, but I candidly cannot remember which, was to pay for certain infrastructure improvements, that private company. Last year, I believe, when I went through the DRIs, I figured that out, and was not thrilled with the fact that Florida state tax dollar monies were appropriated to the city of Palm Coast to pay for those infrastructure improvements. That is not, those are not, you know, city tax dollars, or, it's, every single one of us are paying it, because we're all taxed, we're all state taxpayers, um, but to be very clear, it's not like those monies came into our coffers and we have spent them, they, they haven't been spent, we, that, that money is appropriated for the Loop Road for Out West, so I hope that that clears that up. To her second question with regards to why we haven't talked about, why we have been silent on, uh, the appropriations that we've gotten from Tallahassee, it's because nothing has been appropriated from Tallahassee yet this year, they're still in session, and unfortunately, they all decided to take yesterday off, and I think some of them took today off, because there's a bunch of infighting going on, so, um, hopefully, we get some news tomorrow, Thursday or Friday, with regards to what will happen, uh, with regards to those appropriations. We are as antsy as you guys are, I promise you, we wanna know what Tallahassee is going to do, just as much as you all do, and our top priority that we ask for is water. We heard you all, and that's what we wanted, that's what, that's what, um, Councilman Gambaro, myself, and Councilman Miller went to Tallahassee to ask for, and I hope and pray that they heard us and that we get it, but we don't know yet, um, so that's why we haven't said anything from here, because we don't have anything to say, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Miller, you anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you for that, uh, Vice Mayor, um, I had those same, same notes for, um, some of those answers. The other thing of note with the DRI is that the DRI has to be activated for any of the conditions of the DRI to, um, to, to be required, um, whether it's zoning from our standpoint, or anything that the developer plans to do, and so those DRIs have not been, um, activated, so, to, we can't ask for something in a development of regional impact that has not been activated or started, or, or initiated in any way. I think the, the other thing, um, that I think Ms. Carol, um, mentioned about TPO, um, so thanks for that, 'cause it jogged my memory, that, um, we went to, uh, TPO had the Vision Zero presentation that I think you're referring to, which was a couple of weeks, it was a community workshop, um, and they had kind of a, action stations where you could put stickies on maps and say, hey, this is where I've seen, you know, some issues, uh, with, with traffic and things like that. They had another one that I mentioned, I think at the last meeting, um, for the 2050 Plan, which is the Long Range Plan, and so, in order to get things in the Short Range Plan, they have to be on the Long Range Plan, and they had another, um, activity similar to that, but, to the point, they also just brought online a online tool that basically does the same thing, so you can go onto a map and say, you know, I have an issue with this intersection, or I have an issue with this road from here to here because of, uh, capacity issues, or whatever the case may be, if you, if there's a roundabout that you think is designed poorly, or something like that, um, they're looking for all that, that feedback, um, additionally, one of their, their main concerns as well is pedestrians, so if you walk a lot, if you've noticed problems with, uh, that, and I know some of the problems with our, our pedestrian access is the design of the city with swales and no sidewalks, and, and unfortunately, that's not something we can address, except for by spending probably a billion dollars to put, uh, sewer systems in that would handle that, so it's kind of a non-starter, but, any of the other areas that you might see bicycle issues or pedestrian issues, please use that link to go on there and, uh, give your feedback, because that informs the TPO Board of, of what issues we have, and then that helps them prioritize issues in our community, um, and the TPO Board comprises of Volusia and Flagler, and it's kinda based on population, so Volusia has a lot more population than us, so they typically get more of the funding, so any advocacy our residents can do on that, 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 um, website, that's basically like putting sticky notes on a map, um, would be great, and we'd really appreciate your input for that, advocating for Palm Coast. Um, I don't know how we can work out a comms plan to try to get that available to the public, uh, but I think that's important, that everybody have access to that link, use the link, point out all the issues that you've seen, you know, whether there's a poor design, or whether there's capacity, or whatever the case may be. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Gambaro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just to echo the Vice Mayor's comments on Tallahassee, um, you know, we advocated for two major, uh, water projects, and the big one is the EQ tank, so the, the equalization tank will give us capacity, wastewater treatment plant one, so that, um, when we have high-water events, it gives that plant, and it's, you know, let's say this summer, and it's in the existing state, the opportunity to hold that wastewater, but really, all the water that, that's being intruded through pep tanks and everything else to come through, um, so, we're hoping to hear back, but that's not the only thing we're doing, um, you know, I've reached out to Congressman Fine, uh, where he was supposed to meet with us last Friday, and get him to, to work, visit our wastewater treatment plant and the city, since he's our new member of Congress, um, uh, so that he can, uh, help us with the companion bill in the U.S. House of Representatives, with the, with the bill that Senator Rick Scott is, uh, is, is looking to support as well, so we're, we're trying to pull all the levers that we can to get additional appropriations to come in to help offset some of those costs that, that, you know, we've decided to, to move forward on. Um, I'll be attending the Northeast Florida Regional Council meeting on, on the first, on Thursday, so, uh, look forward to, to meet with the team there, uh, prior to, to our meeting in the afternoon, and then, um, just wanna say thank you to the, to the team, the community, everybody that came together, uh, came out on Saturday for the Tunnel's Tower, uh, uh, event, it was fantastic, it was great to get out there and run with all sorts of members of the community, um, it's just an extremely positive event, it's a great cause, um, and it's, it's an example of what, what we can do when we all work together, so, um, teamwork makes the dream work, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Um, legal counsel, you have anything?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City manager, any final words?
No, Mayor.
Okay, uh, oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Sullivan, do you have any closing comments?
Just, I apologize for the confusion on the vote, but the, the, the audio is just, just almost impossible to make out, I thought I, I thought I understood, I didn't, uh, but at least I was truthful in, in, and bringing forward the fact that, uh, of the mistake I made, uh, and I apologize to everybody for the confusion on that, but, uh, we are where we are.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So, ma'am.
There is a big difference in the quality of water.